Okay, the city manager is trying to get some chairs for out calls, so I'll try and help the out there. Okay, I've got six o'clock, and I'm just following the mayor's order. Let the record be clear that all council members are here with the exception of Niskocher, and she's connected to us via Skype. So, first item is we will have an invocation by Ministers Sage, Bridges, Creekside Church of Christ, followed by the title of the religion. If you're wearing a hat, please remove it.
It's an honor to open this meeting with a word of prayer. If you'd please bow with me. Our Heavenly Father, we are so grateful to you for so many reasons. We're so thankful that you have blessed us at this time to be together, to talk about the things that affect this city. Father, we're just grateful to you for who you are, that you are a kind and loving God, a God that listens and a God that is concerned about his creation. Father, we're also grateful for our mayor, and for all the different individuals who fill the various levels of city council responsibilities. Please help them in their decisions, the things that they do that affect others. Help them to do the best they can in the most honest way that they can. Father, at this time, give the people who are going to be speaking tonight, those who are going to be making decisions tonight, the wisdom and the discernment that they need in order to make the best decisions possible, Father, the most productive decisions possible. Father, be with their attitudes. Help them to set themselves aside and to only look to the interests of others, knowing that this council is about service, it's about humility, and it's about things that will ultimately make this a better community to live in and affect the lives of those who live in this community in a positive way. Father, I ask that you be with everyone who is going to be affecting the agenda of this evening. Father, help them to discuss matters that may be complex, may be challenging. To do so with an open mind, and, Father, when there is disagreement, that it be handled with a reasonable resolution. Father, again, be done with an attitude of humility. We're so thankful to you for everybody who is here in Greenville that is willing to serve and to make the sacrifices necessary in order to benefit this community. Fathers, in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is I have a presentation identifying September as Fair Housing Month. I'm going to read a proclamation. "We, the mayor and the city council of the city of Greenville, Texas, do hereby recognize September as a fair housing month. Whereas Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And the national fair housing law during the month of April provides the opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success and the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Greenville, do proclaim September as Fair Housing Month in the city of Greenville, and do hereby urge all citizens in this locality to become aware of and support the fair housing law. In testimony whereof, witness by hand, this thirteenth day of August, 2019, David O'Drilling, Mayor." Okay, the next item will be, citizens could be heard, and council members, I do, we do have a lot of people out in the hall, so when you do talk, please speak closely to the microphone. Citizens are invited to address the council on topics not already scheduled for public hearings. Please complete a citizen's comment card and present it to the city secretary if you have not already. Speakers will be limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by the city staff and may be placed on future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Carol?
Dennis Mathis.
And I'm sorry, when you do come up, please give your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. I'm Dennis Mathis, 2115 Park Street. I'm here to talk again about eighteen-wheelers on Park Street in Moulton. I addressed the council in March, I believe. And this time, I hope I have a solution. We'll see what happens here. We just had an incident on Moulton last week. Truck tried to turn around in the parking lot by Glenda's Cafe and turned over a pole, didn't break it apparently, but blocked traffic there for a little bit. I was part of the incident. What I'm going to suggest is three things for the council to consider. Let's see, maybe we can hire a council, or a consultant, rather, that has some expertise in traffic flow, truck routes, hazmat requirements, signage particularly. And let's see if they can come up with a feasibility study of aligning the Business 69 route with the existing truck routes. I know that's been talked before, but I think we need to have some expertise in this. So what I'm asking is after this particular review of the council, the consultant, rather, say, take a look at the reviews and recommendations and see if we can act upon those and get that traffic situation on Park Street and Moulton taken care of. And finally, enforcement. So that's the chief's job here. So those are my suggestions, sir.
(Inaudible).
Good evening, Mayor, council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Collins. I do not live in the city of Greenville, but I have a business on Moulton Street, address 63820 Moulton. It's the very black building, Mount Hatt Block on Park. I see lots of trucks go down Moulton Street. Most of them are going north, which kind of tells me that they're getting off Highway 69 out by the cemetery. I'm very concerned about the safety issues there, more so than the annoyance of all the trucks or anything like that. That is a residential area with very close sidewalks to the street, and we have children playing along those ways. A truck at thirty or thirty-five miles an hour will take over a hundred feet to stop. My background, I was a truck driver one time. I hold explosives, I'm afraid, stainless-to-eat, army battlefield equipment, so I know about trucks. After getting out of the trucking business, I worked for several insurance companies and was a safety engineer, and we insured most of trucks and buses. I taught the physical driving to probably hundreds of truck drivers. So I'm familiar with the problems of truck driver stress. One of the amusing things that happened on Moulton Street not too long ago was when those three min-bill preparers came down Moulton. They were now a hundred and twenty-five feet long. And they got down to Park Street, and one guy gets out, he shakes his head, but nobody. They ended up having to back up all the way back to 69, tied up traffic, tied up civil patrolmen for a number of minutes, perhaps an hour. My belief about this problem, this slide that's up there shows Highway 69 twice. One of them points down Moulton Street. It does not say Business 69. It just says 69. Now, if you're a young truck driver, and we have lots of young truck drivers that are inexperienced on the road these days, if you're a young truck driver, which one of those are you going to take? Not all trucks have GPS. Not all GPS units are as good as other units. I said, I see most of the trucks going north, leaving them coming back and going south. The drivers are getting younger and younger and have less experience, or trucking schools that turn out a quote "truck driver" in six weeks. The DOT is considering lowering the age for commercial license licenses to eighteen instead of twenty-one. So I, we need to help these guys all that we can. Is there a solution? No. But that sign back there, if it had the word "business" on top of it, that would probably eliminate some of the trucks that accidentally get on that, get on that road. I counted the number of signs between 69 and Park Street, and there were seven highway signs that all have the word "business" up on top. It doesn't seem like it would be a big stretch for the highway department to put the word "business" up on top of that sign. I also have one other suggestion. Okay. I'm here for...
Three minutes is up. Daniel Flot, there will be a patch here.
I'm Victor Gore, 2501 Rolling Hills here in Greenville. This summer, I'm getting to retire. So this is coming up September, the first September, I'm not going to work and go to work in fifty years, and I'm thrilled. But in the process of doing that this summer, you know, it's setting up, I got to put Medicare Part B infected at this week, and get into, get the retirement check starts in September, and talk to supplement people today, they say it's going to start in September. Well, it affects the whole family, you know, because we've got to change all their insurance too. All that's in effect, and I'm thrilled to be turning seventy, and I don't want to work in my seventieth year. But today at the bank, the lady was helping me with some stuff, saying we can do this and this to make, you know, get some money back, use this, change your credit card to do this. But, you know, then she asked me to total up my income. So she and I totaled up my checks that are going to be coming in. And I just would like you all to realize, I'm going to be making less money, and that's understandable for a retired person. And what you've been asked lately by so many of us who are retired people above sixty-five is to consider putting a freeze on the tax for us as senior adults, just like the school district does. I really wish you'd consider that. I'm counting dollars now, it's going to be a lot tighter, and I put the pressure on my representative and say, hey, I want you to support this. But I was up there the last time I met, and I saw all those other people talk, and I thought they made a good presentation, but I see it didn't get on the agenda again. And I don't know, you're concerned, Mary's expressed his outwardly, but I've lived in this town since ninety-seven, pay my taxes, and am an active member, and it's going to help me a lot to make new choices. And that's a choice that you can help me with by raising the city tax rate for people sixty-five and over. I hope that you'll at least consider that. Thank you. Thank you.
John Delcito, 670 platform drive. I know some of you are not in favor of the proposed freezing taxes for citizens sixty-five and over. I know some of you think it's probably fiscally irresponsible, maybe a drain on your revenue, something you can't get back. There's a thing to be said for, you know, maybe, maybe that's not all true, maybe it's not fiscally irresponsible, maybe it would actually pay off, probably a little bit. But some of you might be saying, hey, I didn't run on to serve this council. I had some ideas. I had a plan. And this wasn't part of my plan. This is a new idea. Okay, fine, new idea, hadn't heard of it, hadn't thought of it before, but it wasn't my plan, so, you know, no, let's don't, let's don't think about it. Well, just let me say, there's not a one of you up there that were elected to implement your plan. You were elected by us to be our representative. Well, you might say, okay, John, I'm going to represent you by, or represent the people that elected me, by implementing my plan, because my plan's the best plan, my tax policy's the smartest thing for the city, so I'm representing you by implementing my tax policy. Well, what does represent mean? Represent means you listen to the citizens that elected you, and you do their will. But you think, well, how do I know the people that elected me, their plan is your plan, John? Well, you don't. How do we know the people that elected you, their plan is your plan? Well, there's only one way. We do it all the time. We just passed fifteen million dollar bond with an election to rebuild two streets, a couple miles in the city, and you presented it to the public, and they said, this is our will. You didn't do that. You said, let's just let the city decide. This should be no different. You don't know, the people that elected you, what is their will for this tax policy? Is it your plan? Or is it, do they have a different plan? Well, the way to know, throw it out there, let's let the people have a vote, have a say-so in it. That's what representative is all about, listening to the people and doing their will. So I wish you would put it on the agenda. I mean, you put things on the agenda all the time and table them. You don't have to vote on something when it's on the agenda. So put it on the agenda, and if it's timed right, vote, not table it. Thank you.
James Evans.
Hello, I'm James Evans. 6410 Buena Vista Drive, Greenville, Texas, 75402. Good evening. As the mayor and this council have chosen not to place the age sixty-five and over Homestead Freeze on the agenda again tonight, we, the citizens, are now turning to the Texas State Constitution to provide an umbrella of protection for the citizens of Greenville who are or will be sixty-five and over in the future. That amounts to something for everyone who continues to live in Greenville. The voters of Texas added the possibility of permanent local option caps to the Texas State Constitution in 2003. These caps apply to residents age sixty-five and older. We will be required to collect six hundred and ninety-six certified signatures of registered voters. We plan to well exceed that number. Once the petition is certified for the city of Greenville, the council will have to place the sixty-five and over freeze on the ballot. We will, we will let the voters of Greenville decide the fate of this issue. We are beginning the petition tonight. All persons who are registered to vote in the city of Greenville elections are eligible to sign the petition. Anyone age eighteen and up who is a registered voter can sign. If you're not registered, go get registered now. I have the petition available to sign tonight following this council meeting. In addition, we look forward to being available with petitions at the following locations. Thursday of this week, August 15th, from nine to eight, we will be at the Reese Davis Center, 2320 Lee. Next Tuesday, my birthday, and I look forward to being out at the Senior Citizens Resource Center, which is just down the street from Reese Davis, at 4912 Lee, and that'll be from 10:30 to 11:30. Driggers Real Estate and Property Tax Consultants, 4403 Wesley, is making their business open and available from nine to five, Monday through Friday, for people to come by and sign the petition. That's nine to five, Driggers Real Estate and Property Tax Consultants. We do have volunteers who will be working neighborhoods and businesses throughout the city. As Johnny Cash states in his song, "The man in black," I wear the black for the poor and the beaten down, living in the hopeless, hungry side of town. And in memory of Walter Cronkite, I'll close by saying, and that's the way it is on Tuesday, August 13th, 2019, good night.
Thank you.
Wayne Morris.
I'm giving you some new eyes, but they haven't kicked in yet, so I'm going to put these on. Wayne Morris, 5600 Bale Street in Greenville. I first ask, anybody here supporting a tax freeze, just stand up momentarily. Thank you all. Represent, act on behalf of others while in government to enact the will of those who elected you. Once it been spent, by many attempting to enact a property tax freeze for seniors in Greenville. You have heard all the reasoning for this initiative, yet have chosen to ignore, refuse to discuss, let alone vote on this proposition that we are proposing. You have on multiple occasions practically tripped over yourselves to sign on a ban deals benefiting a few. Recently, one member even stated, all the calls they had received on an issue were all against, but yet voted for it. This is not representation. One nice thing about living in a democracy is that when you are elected, officials ignore you. There are ways to get action anyway, via removing the obstacles or the right of petition, hence this petition. The freeze is going to happen, and it's not going to stop there. There's other things that need to be done to voice the will of the people. There are many behind this movement, and it is a movement now, ladies and gentlemen. Not only have you refused to discuss your support for or against this initiative, but instead, and I hope it's a joke or a bargaining chip, the largest tax increase the city has seen in years, three cents per hundred, just immediately following double-digit property appraisals increases. Frankly, it's just me, but that's nothing but an in-your-face. I can guarantee you that those who don't have the courage to discuss and vote on the freeze for or against will be strongly challenged in the future. So it's not too late to step up unless at least discuss it openly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, this time I will close the public hearing. I'm sorry, they consider something to be heard. Next item is public hearing, consideration, action on ordinance designating, excuse me, designating certain property as reinvestment zone. Okay? We'll pause if anybody wants to depart. There's going to be a presentation on this issue. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate you all, your attention tonight. Very important project for Greenville. I'll comment after the presentation. The company has a presentation like we have done last year, when we did the same thing last year for an expansion they had last year. But it's always good to refresh and see what else they have new. But I want to introduce their team leader who will make the presentation, Mr. Simon Harvey here, who is project director with Solvay. He comes to visit us from Piedmont, South Carolina. So I'll have Mr. Harvey, you can do your presentation.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing this evening?
Feel free to move the microphone so that you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, I've got a little accent going, so hopefully you can hear me okay.
People that are out in the hall can hear you.
Can you be okay now?
I think I'm fine. I just want people that are out in the hall to be able to hear you just right.
Thank you, I'll do the best I can.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, is it okay if we have a little safety moment, something to share with the people before we start the meeting? It's sort of a traditional thing for us. Introduce Lorraine Webber, she's the safety manager of the plant, Solvay has down in Greenville.
Good evening, everyone. We start all our meetings with a safety share, but first of all, I'd just like to say how well Greenville is doing. Solvay Plant, we have gone two years now without a recordable injury, so we're proving that we can be successful in health and safety as well. This month, we've been focusing on heat stress and heat awareness for our employees. We have sent out newsletters, and every meeting, we have a few moments to talk about the reasons why we need to be aware of this, and what we, what signs and symptoms to be aware of. As you know, today's been a very hot day again, so we raise, make sure our employees have plenty to drink, and that they know the signs and symptoms of anybody showing heat stress. So to look out for, the first signs is somebody getting very hot and irritable. They're losing water, they need to be hydrated. The second move into... The second move into a serious case is when they stop sweating and they start going red and get very hot. That is a real danger point. You need to get them out into something, somewhere cool, and get them some fluids and get them medical treatment as soon as possible. So these are the information that we've been sharing on a day-to-day basis with our employees. And I wish you all to take that home with you as well and be aware, share it with your families, because it's important, we know it wherever we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll get near the microphone. So my name's Simon Harvey. I worked for Solvay 31 years, and the last 22 I've lived in the U.S. I'm a U.S. citizen, and located in Greenville, South Carolina, actually. But I'm the project director of this project. I've been working on it for just over a year, pretty much full-time. So we're just gonna explain a little bit about the project and why it's important to the business and also to the people of Greenville. Next slide, please. Okay. So just a little bit about Solvay. So Cytec as was, you probably know the plant has been called Cytec. We were bought by Solvay, a large Belgian company, about four years ago, and it's been a good for the employees, I feel. As you can see, it's a pretty big company, it's 24,000 people in 61 countries. So we all work for Solvay now. So I came from the UK, I worked for an American company, transferred to the US, and now, I'm in the US, and now I'm the one to European. So in terms of Greenville itself, just to give you some high-low numbers, we've got 370 employees at the site, and the site has been growing. You can see on the bottom right here, in the last two years, we've added 80 people there with other expansions, and hopefully, if we get this expansion going, we'll be able to add about at least another 10 people to the plant. And you can see the pitch to the aeroplanes, the materials we're making, the plant go mostly into aerospace, and we actually serve all the large commercial builds of aircraft, Airbus, Boeing, but also U.S. military and militaries elsewhere in the world as well. So this project, we're gonna hopefully get moving in Greenville shortly, they're making an epoxy resin, and the resin is actually used in the manufacture of aircraft engines. So historically, the turbine blades on the engines have been made out of metals, fancy metals. But by reusing the resin, carbon fiber, we can make the composite material, and they use it in the engines. The advantage of the composite material is it takes weight out of the aircraft, up to anything five hundred to 1,000 pounds in weight. And that saves a lot, obviously makes the aircraft more competitive, it's less fuel, but the other thing is it's better for the environment, because we're less pollution with those materials. So these types of engine parts are fairly new, and this product is brand-new, and it's obviously a secret recipe. This'll be the first plant in the U.S. that manufactures this material. Solvay does make this material, but in Germany. And what we're trying to do is, it's been growing, so they wanted to expand, and we'd like to expand in Greenville, Texas site. So that's what's going on with it. So the product, the project as a whole is about, it's about 10,000 square foot building with some smaller buildings for utilities, et cetera, and it's gonna cost us in the region of $30 million as a company. And we're hoping to get started in the field in the third quarter of this year, so pretty soon. And like I said before, we're gonna have at least 10 new plant positions, and these will be mostly our positions. And Paula, the HR manager, will talk to you a little bit later about, you know, the demographics and the amount of employees that are local and all those types of things, so. So that's the basic projects and the application of the material we supply, material to Boeing and Airbus primarily. We will be supplying to their suppliers from this plant, and they've got plants, they build the aircraft engines, one in Mexico, one's in New Hampshire, and one's in France and Europe, and we're supplying all those facilities. So I just wanna pass over to Paula. She's a local person, she's lived there all life, pretty much, or close to it, and she's the HR manager of the site. She's gonna talk about things we do in the community.
Thank you. I'm Paula Duncan, I'm the human resource manager here in Greenville. And as Simon said, I've lived or worked here for the last 30 years. So he's touched on the 80 employees that we've had over the last two years. Those employees come from Greenville and Hunt County. The 10 that we're looking for, we intend for those to come from Greenville and Hunt County. So this project means continued growth for the city, continued growth for Solvay. We are continually hiring, I actually have a job there coming up this Thursday, targeting here in Greenville. We also participate in career development through GISD. We participate in Hunt County Shared Ministries, Special Olympics. So we are dedicated to this community and to the growth of this community. So we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So to sum up from the Greenville Board Development, this is part of our... I hope they find them. So this is a, this is a best, part of our business retention program. As y'all know, with companies like this, they're large companies, they have plants all over the world, when they compete for new product, new business, this particular piece of business doesn't have to come to Greenville, it can go somewhere else. So, you know, the local plant, you know, they try to be as efficient as possible, and they put their budgets together, and they say, "We can deliver that product for X." So why government gets involved with this is to help with any type of assistance through incentives. We can help them keep those jobs in Greenville. We can help make a difference on their bottom line at this plant, and so that's why we're here tonight, asking for this tax abatement. And they are, as they've said before, they've always done what the, you know, we've come up here and done this before three or four times, they've always completed the project and done it. We had a groundbreaking with Judge Horn a couple of years ago, before he passed, and that was our last project, you remember, we had with them. So this is the next phase. They still have probably 30, 40 acres, I think, to go, as we grow with them, as a business, as a community. I can't think of a better company to have in your community. They're one of our top juice customers as well. So before we answer any questions from you, our mayor and council, we're here to do it. So in the last section of it is regarding, we'll talk about that, regarding the Texas Enterprise Fund project that we nominated in the form, we'll talk about that when we get there.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Gray before he runs out? This time I will open the public hearing, and is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this project, aside from management that was just here?
John Kelso, 6005 Horn Drive. I'm speaking in favor of this abatement. But I want you to just think about what it is you're doing, what are you considering? You're talking about reducing the taxes, the revenue that you receive from this company temporarily. Some people might say, "Well, that's a bad thing." You're gonna increase taxes for all the property owners, individual citizens, property owners in the city. You're gonna make our burden greater by relieving the burden of this corporation. So you need to decide, is that a good idea or a bad idea? You may think, "Well, this is a good idea. In the long run, it'll be fiscally responsible, it'll be a good financial decision, it'll increase the revenue overall in the long run, so let's vote yes." Just think, just think that through, that's really what you're trying to decide. I'm in favor of it, just wanted you to know that. But think about how it works. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak against it? Nothing heard at this point, I will close the public hearing. I'll open up for questions or comments from the council. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I want to thank Solvay for the presentation you guys made, and made the last time that you were here. It's a fantastic company, and Greenville is proud to have you and your employees and your great work. Anyway, in response to not just Mr. Kelso, but some other things I've heard from people this week about tax abatements, I think tax abatements are an important part of what cities do, because it, in theory, it incentivizes someone to come here that would not have come here otherwise. So it's a draw. It says, "You're, you have a lot of different places you could locate, why don't you locate here instead of somewhere else?" Just looking at that $30 million deal with our current 65 cent tax rate, that's $195,000 of new revenue that comes into our city, not counting the new employees, not counting utilities, not counting, you know, all the other secondary benefits. And the other thing that's different than some of the other things we're considering right now is it's temporary. It's a temporary incentive to get them to come here, to be welcomed here, and then, and then they start paying full rate. And so I think that's important to recognize as well. We're not even allowed to give abatements to people who are already here for existing improvements. I mean, that's not even allowed. It's gotta be bringing something new in, and we say, "Thank you for bringing that new thing in, we'll let you ease into paying for it."
You done?
I'm done.
I'd love to offer one, and thank you for bringing, for the presentation and coming from a career in the industry. It was nice to see you picturing a leap engine on your screen.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion concerning this subject for approval of the abatement request.
Just a quick question, this is just for the reinvestments, designate the reinvestments.
Is this public hearings rundown? And action?
Oh, you're gonna action, too?
Yeah. What Carol's saying, your motion was about the tax payment, this is a public hearing, a... No, it's for, it's for action as well. For... Yeah, it's for the reinvestment.
I'm sorry, designate, propose reinvestment, sign, and approval of the tax ordinance.
So moved.
Sheriff Cedric? All right, please vote. And I have a seven to zero. Six and a smiling face. Okay, we'll move on to item 6B, a public hearing, consideration action on a resolution indicating intent to participate in tax abatement with Cytec. Right?
So this, this is funny how the state does it. The state does it like this, where you have to have two public hearings, but yes, this is the actual public, the public hearing for the tax payment. That was to create the zone, this is the tax payment. So I meant all what Daniel just said, but want to recognize a couple of folks here, our chairman Randy Tarkley back there in the back, our secretary treasurer of our board, Holly Gray, they're here in support as well for the company and the board of development, we'll recognize them, so any other questions? Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak in favor of this?
Ditto what I just said earlier.
I'll mark it down for ditto. Anybody wish to speak against it? All right, this time, none here, heard, other than ditto. I will close the public hearing. Does the council have any questions or comments? A move for approval. Please vote. All right, we have a seven to zero, thank you. All right, our third public hearing, consideration action on a resolution authorizing this middle of a Texas CBVG Tax Capital Fund application. Summer?
Yeah, this will be for a Texas Capital Fund application, authorizing you to act as the city's authorized representative in all matters pertaining to that application, and Gray can answer any questions in regards to that application.
Yes, and our consultant, Gary Trailer, is here tonight to talk about that as well, if you need any questions on it, but it's a routine part of the grant application process the city council goes through and approves certain things, so.
Gary's here.
There's Gary right there. So if you have any questions of him, he can give you more detail.
Anybody have any questions? All right, this time I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak in favor of it? Anybody wish to speak against it? At this time, I will close the public hearing, nothing heard, and I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Please vote. Pass the seven to zero, thank you. All right, next item we have is ordinance, under ordinance is item 7A, consideration and action on ordinance authorizing a unit price construction contract with Moss Utilities. Right?
Hello, Mayor, members of council. This was the 16-inch carrier bed crossing line that goes from Burnett Street to the Arthur Service Road, South Street intersection. We would like to use Moss Utilities, they was a low bidder, and they had great reference checks for this type of construction. We did seven, and they all came back plausible. They're the low bidders, well, for a million dollars. So, you know, with the new growth in the south side of town, we do feel that this will be a great project for the city to have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Second. Please vote. And again, we have a seven to zero. Okay, next is Resolution 8A, consideration action on a resolution placing a proposal on September 24th, 2019, city council regular meeting agenda to adopt the 2019 tax rate that will exceed the lower of the rollback rate or the effective rate, requiring the publication of a notice of public hearing on tax increases in accordance with the law. Howie?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is just placing our dates on the meeting agendas for the proposal on September 24th, 2019, regular meeting agenda to adopt a tax rate that will exceed the lower of the rollback rate or the effective rate. So it's, again, just setting the date.
Any questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm not sure, I mean, we've done this before, but as I said in the workshop, I can't, I will not vote for a budget that raises a tax...
We're gonna set dates.
I know, I'm just saying, we, no, I'm just setting dates, because we're notifying the public that we are considering adopting a rate of .682162 for 100 valuation, and I'm just saying, I'm not considering raising that rate. And so I'm for having public hearings, definitely. We have to do that, but I'm not gonna vote in favor of adopt this notice.
Well, we have to, I mean, we have to put this on there if we exceed the effective rate at all, so that's all this is doing. This is not deciding any certain rate or anything like that. This is just telling you that if we are gonna go above the effective rate, we have to have this hearing in this, in this order by state law. So this is not...
Right, but the notice will say, if the city council is considering adopting a tax rate of .682162 for 100 valuation, tax rate will effectively be raised by 15.58%. And...
And we're just going to get.
It doesn't force you to say yes or no, it's a consideration.
I know.
So you're considering what you're thinking. What we're trying to do is set the dates for that consideration.
And so I'm.
And one is the state law, we've got some updates.
I understand.
Setting the date time, I do eight B, this is 8A, which I understand what my colleague's saying. And it also says in section four, the resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approved to set the rate at .682162. And I share his concern. I can't support that rate either, so.
We've done that in the past, and in the past we've continued to work to get it lower. I understand that. And nobody here is saying that they vote for this, that they're agreeing to this tax rate. It's just so much higher that I don't even want to put. You know, I just want the public to know, the staff to know, the council to know that this is way higher than I could approve.
Well, given all that, do I have a motion for set the dates?
So moved.
Here. Do I have a second? Which item are we on?
8A.
8A.
That does not set the dates.
This is placing, this is placing a proposal on the September 24th agenda.
8B sets the dates, does it not, for the public hearing?
B and C are both setting dates for public hearings, yes. And then A is specifying which regular meeting agenda this adoption of the tax rate will occur. This is just saying that on this date, on this regular meeting agenda on September 24th is when a tax rate that will be adopted, not necessarily the tax rate that you are going to adopt.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Right, second.
John, get there first. Please vote. And I have a five to two vote. Passes. Okay, we'll go down. Item 8B. Consideration, action on a resolution calling two public hearings on a tax increase to be held on August 27th and September 10th.
So again, this is just setting the dates for those two public hearings on a potential tax increase for the 27th and then the 10th.
Anybody have a question for Tyra? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, Brent, Al? Please vote. And I've got a seven to zero. All right. HC, consideration, action on a resolution calling for public hearings on the 2019-20 proposed budget to be held on September 10th and September 24th. Howie?
Again, this is setting two public hearings for the proposed budget. And those hearing dates will be September 10th and September 24th.
Any questions for Tyra? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right. Brent and John. Please vote. And I pass the seven to zero. Thank you. All right, Resolution 8D. Consideration, action on a resolution executing amendment number three to the joint operating agreement from TMPA. Summer's our representative now. I've got some background on this. And the power sales contract that the city was a member of on TMPA started out in 1976. And in that agreement, it said that each of the four cities that are involved in this would be Bryan, Denton, Garland, and Greenville, that we would pay for the construction of the power or the right to be able to get electricity from it. That it came up so that when it completed that, there was a resolution that we were asked about. The TMPA board broke the overall program into three different categories. There was one for transmission, one for generation, and one for the mine. And in September of last year, I think, we identified that Greenville no longer wanted to draw power from the station. And the other three cities had not made their decision yet. Then it came down that within about a month, maybe two months, the other cities all said, yeah, that's a good idea. We don't want to do that. So there was an amendment to the joint, there was a joint operating agreement that in the breakout, it said if you had dropped out of part of the three businesses, that you wouldn't be allowed to vote. And once they realized that everybody had dropped out, that we wouldn't have anybody to vote on it. And right now, we're moving and the TMPA is moving from operating. They notified ERCOT that they're going to stop operating out of there entirely. And the system is going to be demolished. So what this is, is an agreement that in that, that everybody can vote on it that was original participant in it. So all four cities will be allowed to vote on the things that are on there. So what this does is it says we agree with the amendment or the joint operating agreement on there. So that in a quick nutshell is it. Anybody got a question? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
All right, Al?
Sir.
Cedric? Please vote. And I pass a seven to zero. Okay, 8P. Consideration, action on a resolution approving a tax abatement agreement with side tax. Right?
After. Any questions? I'm here for questions.
You just don't want to get up?
I think I'll raise it up here.
So any questions for Greg? What did he have for breakfast or anything?
Banana.
Move for approval. Second. I've got Brent. Al? Please vote. And I pass a seven to zero. Item 8K. Consideration, action on a resolution confirming the city's participation in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program. Daniel, I've got you on air.
Great. I'm head to me.
So you're substituting Greg.
That's right.
Good.
Well, this one, I was mentioning earlier, we'd get to this one. This one is, we are nominating them, as y'all remember, we nominated L3 some time ago to be a enterprise zone project for the city. The city gets six designations from the state per year and buy in them. And so we are, the company asked for the nomination and we agreed, the board of development has agreed and recommended it to the council. This is only a city designation that affects only their state sales tax. It doesn't have anything to do with our city's sales tax. And so any, what that allows them to do, like it happened for L3, any construction or any equipment they purchase within the state of Texas and they pay state sales tax, they're allowed to rebate certain dollars back from the state if their state project is approved at the state level. And so all this is, is a portion of that application that we have to approve. We will nominate them as a project under this Texas Enterprise Zone Program of the state of Texas so that it becomes one of our six, and that will be two of our six that we will do. I'll take any questions on that. It doesn't affect us local taxes, doesn't affect anything locally, it has everything to do with the state's sales tax.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve. All right, Cedric?
Second.
John, seconded. Please vote. We've got a seven to zero. Thank you. Next is 8G. Consideration and action on a resolution appointing members for comprehensive plan and value rate committee. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Steve?
Steve, what do you want to come in?
So I'm here, here. I'm going to, I'm going to let Latora, our planner, come up since she met with the committee on that. She got in the morning if I wanted to, I wasn't able to be there, so I'm going to let her present that.
There's a lot of opinions.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
I'll speak loud.
Today I just wanted to discuss the consideration for the steering committee list that's comprised of 20 members. That includes two members of council, residents across the city of Greenville representing our districts, and board members that represent different stakeholders across the city. So we're hoping to have the first steering committee meeting the second week of September. So with your approval, we'll continue on that process.
Okay, and we have a list of several people that have been nominated on there. There's two members of the city council and I think Al and Brett volunteered to do it. Somebody else want to get on there as far as being a member?
I'll have them to.
Well, we'll get to other members, I'm just putting the council members right now. Al wants to and Brent. You want to get on there?
Yeah.
Supposed to have two, not three.
Al, Ken wants to do it all.
Okay. That's agreeable with the rest of the council, huh? Brent?
I don't know, you can't have three, I think it's just.
Mayor, I have some questions about this, I'd like to better like to executive session as possible.
Okay. You want to go to executive session right now?
I have some questions on this issue.
Okay. And we'll take a short break and we're going to go to executive session, come out. Come out.
We go in time, and the fish goes through. My life, on life. I guess it's different. I guess. It's something. Right? I don't know. But my dad is listening. I'm showing him. Looking back to say if he would like to get the rest of the council members back. But it's no better than that. I think. If you're not the one, then you're always. What do you mean exactly? That. Um, did that right? Oh, you still got to go. Thank you. That's all. I didn't say. All right, we'll back and say. It is almost in session.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I believe we tabled item eight G and reschedule it at the next, the next, plus City Council meeting.
I have a motion to table it until the next meeting, or I have a second. Is it U. Brenner? Cedric. All right, please vote. And the pass is seven zero. Okay, moving on to item eight H, consideration action on a resolution approving purchase of a mobile arrest form integration software for legal reporting. And we'll do that with seizure funds. Yes?
Mayor and council, thank you. This module of software is a complement to our records management system. It's manufactured or produced by the same company, Spillman, now owned by Motorola. This is a particular module that we did not purchase originally. I'm not quite certain if it was still in development or not at that point, but it hasn't been out for several years. This has been something we've been trying to get done in order to produce some efficiencies. Currently, if there's an arrest made, you populate a report field for the incident. Good bit of information. We're in the information collection business a lot of the time. And then we have to go over to another separate screen and repopulate it manually, which is taking officers' time from other duties. So with that, this module will integrate all of it. You do it one time, you hit the button, whether you've arrested three, four, five, you're not having to go back over and over and over again. We chose to do this with seizure funds and requesting your permission to use those funds. The cost is eleven thousand three ninety, which is going to include the first year maintenance. Project management installation and web-based training. Now, in year two, there is a maintenance fee, of course, with software, and that is one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars looking forward with this system. I do not see us replacing this entire records management system for a very, very long time.
So you're requesting the eleven three ninety plus the thirteen eighty-nine?
No, sir, the thirteen oh, the thirteen eighty-nine, just so you'll be aware, moving forward, that will be an additional expense in future budgets.
Yeah, what I was, what I was going to is, are you trying to also get approval before the second year of maintenance?
No, sir.
So you just want the package itself?
Yes, sir.
And the training and the stuff that you've got listed on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Move on to move. Go ahead. I give a second. It's not a race, guys.
It wasn't scary.
Please vote. Pass is seven zero, thank you. Okay, next item is consent calendar. Carol?
City Council meeting minutes from July twenty-third. Resolution adopting Sill Ryan's resolution, ordinance authorizing final payment to Blue Star Utilities, resolution approving the TMA fiscal year, the twenty twenty decommissioning budget, and ordinance authorizing a contract between the city and North Texas Colts School.
Any questions or any items anybody wishes to pull from there to discuss further? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. All right, Cedric. John, seconded. Please vote. Seven zero. Okay, next item is city staff council reports, and some are going to tell us what causes the, or the makeup of the animal shelter fee, and give us no reviews.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a short presentation that was requested by council that we needed to look at our adoption fees. So I took our comparison cities and what they charge, kind of did some other cities as well, so I'll go through that presentation. So currently, adoption prices include fees for sterilization and rabies vaccination, which are required by the state of Texas for a municipal-run shelter that the municipality has a population of over ten thousand. We internally have agreements with the Animal Medical Center and the cost per pause to sterilize animals that are adopted through the shelter at a discounted rate. So currently, right now, Greenble, animal control adoption fees in adult dog for the adoption is fifteen dollars, which is, as in our ordinances, sterilization for a male is forty, female is sixty, and then rabies vaccination is ten. You go to a puppy, puppy's about half the price, at seven dollars, sterilization for a male is forty, female is sixty, rabies vaccination is ten. You go on down to the cats and the kittens. A cat is going to be seven dollar adoption rate, sterilization twenty for a male, thirty-five for a female, rabies vaccination is at ten, kittens adoption are five dollars, sterilization for a male is twenty, thirty-five for a female, and then ten dollars for the rabies vaccination. Animals that are sterilized when surrendered are half the adoption fee, so if we have proof that they're, when they're surrendered, that they're already sterilized, then the adoption fee gets cut in half. Local veterinarian prices, we just took some in the area range for a dog that's fifty pounds, the sterilization ranged from one sixty to two fifty for a male, one sixty-five to three hundred for a female, cat was eighty-one to one fifty for a male, and then one hundred and thirty-five to two hundred for a female. City of Cleburne, they require an adoption application, dogs are seventy-five, cats are fifty, includes spray neuter, rabies, age-appropriate vaccinations, microchip, deworming, heartworm test, heartworm prevention, flea and tick prevention, and a thirty-day free pet insurance trial. City of Paris, males are a hundred dollars, females are a hundred and ten, includes microchip, that, and that's for dogs, I apologize, microchip, vaccines, and sterilization, cats are fifty-five. They also have a deal through Petco that you can adopt through Petco, and that includes vaccines and dewormer, and sixty dollars. City of Corsicana, dog or cat is fifty-five dollars, they require an adoption application, includes vaccinations, deworming, heartworm testing, and FIV, AIDS testing for cats. Sterilization is done through a sterilization agreement and requires proof of sterilization within thirty days for adults or six months of age for kittens or puppies. Dennison, they do not, municipal, their municipality does not handle adoptions, that handled through the Dennison Animal Welfare Group, they charge sixty dollars for dogs and fifty dollars for cats. They said small puppies or desirable dogs can go for a hundred dollars, and that includes vaccines and sterilization. So when you look at that all kind of put together, Greenble's, the gray bar that you're looking at there, eighty-five dollars, Cleburne is the one next, Paris would be the one ten, Corsicana is the darker gray, Dennison, and then the veterinarian obviously is the higher one between the dogs and the cats, so just kind of a comparison chart there. And then when you're looking at the comparison, I took out, let's go back to this one real quick, when I took out the veterinarian prices, so on average among the comparison cities, the price for a dog was seventy-seven dollars on average, and then a cat was fifty-three dollars. And then we took some other cities that are kind of in our area, maybe our size may be a little bit bigger, Mesquite, dogs are a hundred, cats are eighty, Allen, dogs and cats are both ninety-five, Saxon, dogs and cats are both eighty dollars, Balk Springs, dogs are seventy, cats are fifty, Watuga is, dogs and cats are both eighty dollars, Saginaw, dogs and cats are forty dollars, and then Lancaster, large dogs are twenty-five, small dogs and puppies are fifteen, cats are fifteen, and then some of them require the adoption application and go through different processes. So on average, we're, we're in the ballpark of our comparison cities. So if we need to change that or adjust that, we're, you know, we, we need to know at this point in the budget process so that we can include that in the budget, so if that's something that we need to adjust on any level.
But appears they're online, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we're covering our costs as far as cost for the sterilization and the rabies. You know, we're not asking any more or any less, so we're just kind of basically covering our costs with the, with those fees. So if we need to adjust those, then certainly I will take suggestions or recommendations.
I don't know, I requested that. I was told that our fees were prohibited when it comes to adoption, but it appears like we're very comfortable with those fees, so.
As long as we cover, we're recovering the cost, I think that's something to probably love.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay.
Thank you.
Item eleven, is there anything that council members would like to have brought up at future meetings? Please just give me a subject of, one or detail.
Yes, I would like to see this issue with these sixty-five and over, on the next city council.
Anything else?
I would also like to see it, and I would like it to include a little presentation on initiative and referendum petitions, because as we heard tonight, it, it appears that there is a movement that wants to do more than one, so it would be helpful to know what can be done and how they go about doing it so we don't get inundated with calls.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking for.
I'd, I'd like a presentation to explain to the citizens what they can use the initiative and referendum petition for and the process to go about it, and the state constitution allows us to specify all that. So, so there's a section ninety series through the one hundred series in the charter, which is different rules depending on which subject they're going after.
No, they can use the chart, the charter for either, and they can use the constitution for either. Anything else?
So you're talking about, you want a general presentation to tell people how to use the truck, the?
What they could use it for, what they can't use it for, because they can't use it for certain type of revenue changes, they can't use it for, according to our charter. Plus, if they walked in to Carol's office or whoever, what do I do? What is the process? What is the forms I use? It's, I don't know if that process is in writing or available, or?
Even if we prefer the section ninety-nine to like one.
Even if we could put it out on the website where they could access it, so we don't have to get calls and say, well, we're going to do a petition. How do you do it? I don't know. You know, so, just a general education piece.
I have a quick factual question that may just be answered now, I don't know, but, and, and it probably has been, and I just am not good with my memory, but these Center Point Lane improvement projects, things in Bush Pumps, three hundred and some lines, water transfer lines, are those finished or almost finished?
Almost finished.
Okay.
They're supposed to be.
Somebody asked me this week, was, just moved to town, I was complaining about the water pressure, and I said, hold on, they're really close to finishing.
I, I don't, I don't know the date, but it's, I mean, they're, we're right smack in the middle of the Center Point pump station and installation and all that. I don't think it's. Oh, yeah, Brett's.
February twenty. Our completion date by contract is February twentieth of twenty twenty.
Okay.
You know, right now, we're seventy-five percent down with the, the system, the pumps and everything else, it's just the water storage system itself.
Okay.
All the lines have been laid, so we're, we're close.
Thank you.
Anything else at your meeting? All right, at this point, I'm going to close that up. Go ahead.
I don't want to perjure me, I would like to make a blanket statement.
Not at this time.
I think, not at this time, okay, we cannot make a blanket statement.
Well, depending on what somebody, because if it's covered in the agenda, you can make it, if it's not in the agenda, you can't discuss it.
I won't discuss it, that's my statement.
Oh, deferred like attorney.
Well, if it's not on the agenda, you can't, I mean, there's not a time for making statements on anything other than, you know, giving a citizen his comment.
I'll write, I'll make a citizen's comment. I am a citizen.
Yeah, but we already closed out the citizens to the earth. I mean, I'm not trying to be hard, I'm just trying to follow rules.
Let me tell.
Okay, any questions on the board and commission minutes? All right, I have seven thirty-six, and we will close the open session. Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We have a lot of great things. I'm glad. I'm glad.
All right, we'll back and say. It is almost in session.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I believe we tabled item eight G and reschedule it at the next, the next, plus City Council meeting.
I have a motion to table it until the next meeting, or I have a second. Is it U. Brenner? Cedric. All right, please vote. And the pass is seven zero. Okay, moving on to item eight H, consideration action on a resolution approving purchase of a mobile arrest form integration software for legal reporting. And we'll do that with seizure funds.
Mayor and council, thank you. This module of software is a complement to our records management system, it's manufactured or produced by the same company, Spillman, now owned by Motorola. This is a particular module that we did not purchase originally, I'm not quite certain if it was still in development or not at that point, but it hasn't been out for several years, if this has been something we've been trying to get done in order to produce some efficiencies. Currently, if there's an arrest made, you populate a report field for the incident, good bit of information, we're in the information collection business a lot of the time, and then we have to go over to another separate screen and repopulate it manually, which is taking officers' time from other duties. So with that, this module will integrate all of it, you do it one time, you hit the button, whether you've arrested three, four, five, you're not having to go back over and over and over again. We chose to do this with seizure funds and requesting your permission to use those funds. The cost is eleven thousand three ninety, which is going to include the first year of maintenance. Project management installation and web-based training. Now, in year two, there is a maintenance fee, of course, with software, and that is one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars looking forward with this system. I do not see us replacing this entire records management system for a very, very long time.
So you're requesting the eleven three ninety plus the thirteen eighty-nine?
No, sir, the thirteen oh, the thirteen eighty-nine, just so you'll be aware, moving forward, that will be an additional expense in future budgets.
Yeah, but I was, what I was going to is, are you trying to also get approval before the second year of maintenance?
No, sir.
So you just want the package itself?
Yes, sir.
And the training and, and the stuff that you've got listed on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Move on to move. Go ahead. I give a second. It's not a race, guys.
It wasn't scary.
Please vote.
It freezes.
Pass is seven zero, thank you. Okay, next item is consent calendar. Carol?
City Council meeting minutes from July twenty-third. Resolution adopting Sill Ryan's resolution, ordinance authorizing final payment to Blue Star Utilities, resolution approving the TMA fiscal year, the twenty twenty decommissioning budget, and ordinance authorizing a contract between the city and North Texas Colts School.
Any questions or any items anybody wishes to pull from there to discuss further? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. All right, Cedric. John, seconded. Please vote. Seven zero. Okay, next item is city staff council reports, and some are going to tell us what causes the, or the makeup of the animal shelter fee, and give us no reviews.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a short presentation, it was requested by council that we needed to look at our adoption fee, so I took our comparison cities and, and what they charge, kind of did some other cities as well, so I'll go through that presentation. So currently, adoption prices include fees for sterilization and rabies vaccination, which are required by the state of Texas for a municipal-run shelter that the municipality has a population of over ten thousand. We internally have agreements with the Animal Medical Center and the cost per pause to sterilize animals that are adopted through the shelter at a discounted rate. So currently, right now, Greenble, animal control adoption fee is an adult dog for the adoption is fifteen dollars, which is a, as in our ordinances, sterilization for a male is forty, female is sixty, and then rabies vaccination is ten. You go to a puppy, puppy's about half the price, at seven dollars, sterilization for a male is forty, female is sixty, rabies vaccination is ten. You go on down to the cats and the kittens, a cat is going to be seven dollar adoption rate, sterilization twenty for a male, thirty-five for a female, rabies vaccination is at ten, kittens adoption are five dollars, sterilization for a male is twenty, thirty-five for a female, and then ten dollars for the rabies vaccination. Animals that are sterilized when surrendered are half the adoption fee, so if we have proof that they're, when they're surrendered, that they're already sterilized, then the adoption fee gets cut in half. Local veterinarian prices, we just took some in the area range for a dog that's fifty pounds, the sterilization ranged from one sixty to two fifty for a male, one sixty-five to three hundred for a female, cat was eighty-one to one fifty for a male, and then one hundred and thirty-five to two hundred for a female. City of Cleburne, they require an adoption application, dogs are seventy-five, cats are fifty, includes spray neuter, rabies, age-appropriate vaccinations, microchip, deworming, heartworm test, heartworm prevention, flea and tick prevention, and a thirty-day free pet insurance trial. City of Paris, males are a hundred dollars, females are a hundred and ten, includes microchip, that, and that's for dogs, I apologize, microchip, vaccines, and sterilization, cats are fifty-five. They also have a, a deal through Petco that you can adopt through Petco, and that includes vaccines and dewormer, and sixty dollars. City of Corsicana, dog or cat is fifty-five dollars, they require an adoption application, includes vaccinations, deworming, heartworm testing, and FIV, AIDS testing for cats. Sterilization is done through a sterilization agreement and requires proof of sterilization within thirty days for adults or six months of age for kittens or puppies. Dennison, they do not, municipal, their municipality does not handle adoptions, that handled through the Dennison Animal Welfare Group, they charge sixty dollars for dogs and fifty dollars for cats. They said small puppies or desirable dogs can go for a hundred dollars, and that includes vaccines and sterilization. So when you look at that all kind of put together, Greenble's, the, the gray bar that you're looking at there, eighty-five dollars, Cleburne is the one next, Paris would be the one ten, Corsicana is the darker gray, Dennison, and then the veterinarian obviously is the higher one between the dogs and the cats, so just kind of a comparison chart there. And then when you're looking at the comparison, I took out, let's go back to this one real quick, when I took out the veterinarian prices, so on average among the comparison cities, the price for a dog was seventy-seven dollars on average, and then a cat was fifty-three dollars. And then we took some other cities that are kind of in our area, maybe our size may be a little bit bigger, Mesquite, dogs are a hundred, cats are eighty, Allen, dogs and cats are both ninety-five, Saxon, dogs and cats are both eighty dollars, Balk Springs, dogs are seventy, cats are fifty, Watuga is, dogs and cats are both eighty dollars, Saginaw, dogs and cats are forty dollars, and then Lancaster, large dogs are twenty-five, small dogs and puppies are fifteen, cats are fifteen, and then some of them require the adoption application and go through different processes. So on average, we're, we're in the ballpark of our comparison cities. So if we need to change that or adjust that, we're, you know, we, we need to know at this point in the budget process so that we can include that in the budget, so if that's something that we need to adjust on any level.
But appears they're online, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we're covering our costs as far as cost for the sterilization and the rabies. You know, we're not asking any more or any less, so we're just kind of basically covering our costs with the, with those fees. So if we need to adjust those, then certainly I will take suggestions or recommendations.
I don't know, I requested that, I was told that our fees were prohibited when it comes to adoption, but it appears like we're very comfortable with those fees, so.
As long as we cover, we're recovering the cost, I think that's something to probably love.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay.
Thank you.
Item eleven, is there anything that council members would like to have brought up at future meetings? Please just give me a subject of, one or detail.
Yes, I would like to see this issue with these sixty-five and over, on the next city council.
Anything else?
I would also like to see it, and I would like it to include a little presentation on initiative and referendum petitions, because as we heard tonight, it, it appears that there is a movement that wants to do more than one, so it would be helpful to know what can be done and how they go about doing it so we don't get inundated with calls.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking for.
I'd, I'd like a presentation to explain to the citizens what they can use the initiative and referendum petition for and the process to go about it, and the state constitution allows us to specify all of that. So? So there's a section ninety series through the one hundred series in the charter, which is different rules depending on which subject they're going after.
No, they can use the chart, the charter for either, and they can use the constitution for either. Anything else?
So you're talking about, you want a general presentation to tell people how to use the truck, the?
What they could use it for, what they can't use it for, because they can't use it for certain type of revenue changes, they can't use it for, according to our charter. Plus, if they walked in to Carol's office or whoever, what do I do? What is the process? What is the forms I use? It's, I don't know if that process is in writing or available, or?
Even if we prefer the section ninety-nine to like one.
Even if we could put it out on the website where they could access it, so we don't have to get calls and say, well, we're going to do a petition. How do you do it? I don't know. You know, so, just a general education piece.
I have a quick factual question that may just be answered now, I don't know, but, and, and it probably has been, and I just am not good with my memory, but these Center Point Lane improvement projects, things in Bush Pumps, three hundred and some lines, water transfer lines, are those finished or almost finished?
Almost finished.
Okay. Somebody asked me this week, was, just moved to town, I was complaining about the water pressure, and I said, hold on, they're really close to finishing.
I, I don't, I don't know the date, but it's, I mean, they're, we're right smack in the middle of the Center Point pump station and installation and all that. I don't think it's. Oh, yeah, Brett's.
February twenty. Our completion date by contract is February twentieth of twenty twenty.
Okay.
You know, right now, we're seventy-five percent down with the, the system, the pumps and everything else, it's just the water storage system itself.
Okay.
All the lines have been laid, so we're, we're close.
Thank you.
Anything else at your meeting? All right, at this point, I'm going to close that up. Go ahead.
I don't want to perjure me, I would like to make a blanket statement.
Not at this time.
I think, not at this time, okay, we cannot make my blanket statement.
Well, depending on what somebody, because if it's covered in the agenda, you can make it, if it's not in the agenda, you can't discuss it.
I won't discuss it, that's my statement.
Oh, defer like attorney.
Well, if it's not on the agenda, you can't, I mean, there's not a time for making statements on anything other than, you know, giving a citizen his comment.
I'll write, I'll make a citizen's comment. I am a citizen.
Yeah, but we already closed out the citizens to the earth. I mean, I'm not trying to be hard, I'm just trying to follow rules.
Let me tell.
Okay, any questions on the board and commission minutes? All right, I have seven thirty-six, and we will close the open session. Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a lot of great things. I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm glad. We don't have a percent.